I will call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nature, on earth, in this little liberty and justice forever.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone would like to make approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All right, anyone second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Public comment, so this is the opportunity for anyone in the public to comment on items not listed on the agenda. So if anyone has anything they'd like to talk about that's not listed on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. No, okay. Announcements?
There are no announcements.
All right. Approval of May 28th, 2024, meeting minutes. I thought they looked good, I didn't see anything noteworthy.
I did notice one correction after the packet had went out and after I had reviewed the minutes as well, and it had to do with Mahachak Concept Plan Review.
Okay.
And the draft minutes do contain a condition that he provide a future or the property provide for a future road connection to the north, and I thought that you did not recommend that.
Sure, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The neighbors didn't want that.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll just make that one correction.
Thank you for catching that. Anyone else? No? Okay, I'll make a recommendation to approve the minutes with that correction. Does anyone want a second?
A second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then we have public hearing. Consider amendment to Title 1118 of City Code regarding grading operations.
All right. Do you want to handle this, or I can hand it, okay. The city code, it was discovered recently by some residents actually that the city code contains some conflicting information regarding hours of operation for certain construction-related activities. And historically, the staff has been using Title 5-5-2 of the city code. This is outside of the zoning ordinance. When we have developments that are under construction or we meet with contractors, we've been citing the allowable hours of operation stated in Title 5-5-2, which allows construction operations from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And it was recently discovered that Title 1118, which is part of the zoning ordinance and under the purview of the Planning Commission, also contains information related to hours and of operation, and they're more restrictive. And they're specific to grading operations. So we brought the item before the city council for their input, and it was concluded that all of the hours of operation should be contained in one section of the city code entitled 5-5. So the item before you is just simply to remove it, the reference to hours of operation in Title 1111 of the code. To delete it, and then it would be before the city council to amend the other section of the code. So Title 5 is outside of your purview. So the council is scheduled to discuss that or hold up, make a decision on that at their next meeting on July 11th. Or no, it's set there. It's scheduled at their July 11th meeting.
Okay.
For discussion, so. But because all, any change to the zoning ordinance does require a public hearing by this body, we have scheduled that for tonight, so.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about?
I don't have any, do.
Okay. So just on a side note for informational purposes, the initial feedback that we got from the city council is that they'll probably be restricting the hours of operation further from what they are today.
Sure, so we just need to remove?
You just need to remove it.
Remove one, and then they go in and they do the details.
And they will adjust it in the other code, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and you're a recommending body, so you make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will make the final decision on the zoning ordinance amendment as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I will open the public hearing at 7:09 PM. If anyone would like to comment on the consideration, consider amendment to Title 1118 of the city code regarding grading operations, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Larry Schofield, 11550 Deuce Road, Elko. We live directly across from this development. The construction driveway comes right out at our driveway. As far as the hours of operation, it's been seven to six, and now they want to make it seven to seven. I'm sure Niagara and Chote want to make it later than that, but I don't think any of you would want to be across from this till 10 o'clock at night. So that's just our perspective on this, so when you're discussing it or voting on it, take that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask another time for the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak about the consideration for the amendment to Title 1118 of the city code regarding grading operations, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I have to ask one last time. So if you'd like to speak on this public hearing, consideration amendment to Title 1118 of the city code regarding grading operations, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, we do have someone online.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We didn't go over the online protocols, but Janelle, I think you're the only one on there. If you have a question, you can raise your hand on Zoom and we can call on you.
Oh, she would like to speak. Get you unmuted.
Great, am I unmuted?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Janelle Kuj, and I live at 26775 Grand Avenue. And just to clarify, tonight, public hearing is just to remove the, is it, say it again, is it 111?
1118.
Dash eight. So it is not to set the hours, is that correct?
That is correct. The hours will be set by the city council.
Okay, and will there be any, will the Planning Commission be, make a recommendation on hours at all this evening?
The Planning Commission will not. They certainly can. We have provided the draft language as instructed by the city council in their packet, so they can see, I mean, I can read it. The proposed language would be, "No person shall engage in or permit construction activities involving the use of any kind of electric, diesel, or gas-powered machine or other power equipment, except between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on weekdays, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM on weekends or holidays. And then, 'Earthwork and hauling operations shall be performed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Such activity is also prohibited on the following holidays, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. The city administrator may, upon good cause, be shown very these days and hours in writing.'"
Thank you, Renee. I would just like to add, seven to seven would be the absolute latest that the residents that live in the area. Elko New Market is mainly a residential community at this point, and although we're going to be having some industrial parks built, you need to keep in mind that these industrial parks are, in this case, 100% surrounded by township residents that have lived here for a long time. We live in these homes. We have children, we have families, and we have a right to enjoy our properties. And so the latest that I think that the council or the planning commission should consider is 7:00 PM, and the earliest is 7:00 AM. If I do the math, it's my understanding that some of the contractors may not like this, but if I do the math on that, that if they work Monday through Saturday, that's 72 hours a week that they can get in and work. Even if it's a rain season or you have a few rainy days, there should be more than enough opportunity to get 40 hours of work in. And the remainder of the day should be respected for the community members that have homes and families. So thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. I'll ask one more time for good measure. If anybody wants to speak on the consideration for the amendment to Title 1118 of the city code regarding grading operations, please step up to the podium or state your name or raise your hand online. Okay, I will close the public hearing at 7:15 PM. All right, commissioners? I mean, we can't have two. So we do need to streamline this, right?
Yep.
So removal of that and then putting it in Section 5.2 and making that under the purview of the council to set the times.
Yes.
I think, I think the planning commission should also recommend the hours. I would support these hours. It sounds like the community also supports the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, nothing later than 7:00 PM.
Mm-hmm. I think that's reasonable.
I agree.
Agree? Okay. So anyone want to make a recommendation to remove the 1118?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Okay. And then, do you want us to approve that, or do you want us to add that recommendation onto that?
You can do both in the same.
Yes.
I can do both, okay. So all in favor to approve removal of the 1118 to add it to the 5.5-2 with the recommendation of the 7:00 AM and the 7:00 PM timeframe? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, thank you. Then we're moving on to general business, zoning ordinance amendment, detached accessory buildings and accessory dwellings units discussion?
Let's pull it up here. Hopefully I can get it this time. So why isn't it going to present, where's the notes? Okay, I don't think I need the notes anyways. Okay, thank you for bearing with me. We're continuing our discussion on accessory structures, residential accessory structures. On February 27th, the planning commission kind of introduced the topic. Staff presented research on similar and surrounding city standards. The commission requested staff to provide some examples of what these standards would look like on surveys from the community. They also recognized that our standards are far more restrictive than surrounding and similar cities, and would like to amend the ordinance to allow for larger accessory use structures. At the May 28th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, staff presented those examples that were requested. The commission offered initial recommendations of 1,000 square foot, total maximum square footage limit for one acre and less properties. So you could have, you know, two 500 square foot garages. And then 2,000 would be the total max limit for properties that are one acre or greater. There's also a recommendation to allow for two structures as opposed to the current one allowed per property. The staff and commission wish to continue these discussions related how they might affect the city's ADU ordinance, which is based off of the same requirements as the accessory structures. Also during these discussions with the planning commission, the commission expressed general agreement that standards for accessory structures in commercial and industrial zones do not require an amendment at this time. The city's current standards for commercial and industrial are comparable or less restrictive than surrounding or similar cities researched by staff. Detached accessory structures are currently allowed as an accessory use by right in all commercial and industrial districts, as well as in the city's institutional district. And that's based off of a percentage of the square footage of the gross floor space of the principal building. Other cities that allow for this typically, it's based on 30% of that gross floor space. And we're right now at 30 and 50, depending on the zoning district, so. Height is something we did not necessarily address. So currently, the city allows for a maximum height of these structures of 15 feet for residential accessory use structures, measured from, Renee, do you remember the word? I was going to put it in here and I forgot, it's not.
The midpoint?
The midpoint, so not the peak. It's not measured from the top, it's 15 foot to the midpoint of the roof.
Okay.
And that's something we can look at changing to, maybe simplify things for people, because a lot of people don't understand that. And then increasing structures, increasing the size of these structures may require additional amendment to the maximum height as well, depending on garage door height and how that'll all work out. Driveways and access, we also did not discuss at our last meeting, so currently the city does not require paved access for these structures. It's likely that residents will be driving campers and trailers and back and forth from their driveway to the new garages. So staff is recommending some feedback and direction on this issue, as there may be some potential nuisances in the future with dead grass and complaints from neighbors. And accessory dwelling units must conform with area limitations contained in Section 11-66 of the city code, which is the accessory use structure section of the ordinance. Currently, ADUs must be at least 250 square feet in the area and may not exceed the area of the principal dwelling unit. Staff don't recommend any specific changes to the current city code relating to 11-5-20 covering ADUs. However, staff are seeking feedback and direction if the commission wishes to institute a separate standard for maximum allowable sizes for ADUs, as opposed to just saying whatever the accessory use structure is. So we're recommending that you consider amendments to the city's detached accessory structure and accessory dwelling unit ordinances, specifically seeking feedback on the following. That detached accessory building shall comply with the following area limitations for one acre and under 1,000 square foot maximum total floor area allowed without conditional use permit, for one acre and over 2,000 square foot without conditional use permit. Second, there shall be no more than two, instead of one, detached accessory buildings per lot in residential zones, except by conditional use permit. Our reasoning for this was to allow those who already have a small garden shed to keep it if they do want to build a larger structure. Does the commission wish to amend the maximum allowable height of residential accessory structures, which would also include accessory dwelling units? And does the commission wish to enact any access or driveway requirements for certain sized structures, whether that be an ADU or just an accessory use structure? And finally, does the commission wish to recommend ADUs be considered separately from or included with the potential ordinance amendments relating to a total allowable size for these structures? If changes are recommended, staff will draft an ordinance amendment for further discussion at an upcoming meeting and a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Do you mind going to that previous slide that you were just on, so I can?
Yeah.
Make sure that we, yeah, thanks.
There we go.
Thank you. All right. You just want to go one by one? Okay. So the recommendation for number one, which we talked about at the previous meeting, any changes, any further discussion on this one, Casey? No? Okay, so we're good with number one for that recommendation? Okay. Number two, we also talked about this at the previous meeting as well. Are there any recommendations for changes?
No.
No, we're good with the two?
I do have a question about, except by conditional use permit. Would there be a reason to allow additional?
Yeah. So as staff, we're going over that section of code, and if we do decide to go up this far, we could just eliminate the conditional use permits altogether. I think it's more than fair, the sizes we're allowing. I don't know if we'd really see a need for additional use permit.
I was wondering kind of the same thing, like in what situation would someone need a conditional use permit for?
Yeah, and if we say except by conditional use permit, then we have to define the terms by which we would?
Right.
Choose to issue one? And I think I would recommend eliminating the potential for that if we're going that large, or if you decide to go that large.
Agreed. I think we should remove the except by conditional use permit. That creates too many more potential problems.
Great, and creates more gray area, I think. Are you in agreement?
I agree.
Okay. So we'll keep number two, except for, we'll remove the except by conditional use permit. Remove that recommendation. Number three, so does the commission wish to amend the maximum allowable height of the residential accessory structures, including ADUs?
So my current thought is 15 feet from the midpoint. That allows you for how high of a garage door would you?
That's what I was trying to sketch up here, and I can't.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture it in my brain, too.
How many people from having?
Campers and stuff with AC units on top, too.
Is there, in that, like, research that was done previously, like, kind of on the sizes and things, was this one of them?
No, so height wasn't taken into consideration. I can't say off the top of my head what other cities were, but I know they weren't too dissimilar from 15.
Okay.
So we can bring that back as well, with more research, if you want to take a look at kind of those other city standards and what everyone else is doing.
I would like to make, like, be more knowledgeable about it, rather than guessing and seeing what makes sense? Than just throwing a number out there. I don't know how others feel about that.
I agree with you, I'd rather have this done right the first time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Some more info on that?
On hold for three.
Thanks. Sorry for more work.
No, it's fine.
And then number four, does the commission wish to enact access driveway requirements for certain sized structures?
I think so. After all this rain that we've had, too, and people then trying to get to their backyard.
So, and that was a question I had, like, did you notice anything, like, informational-wise, when you were doing your research regarding?
Access standards, no. I know currently our city, you can only have one driveway, one curb cut.
Right.
So we're not talking about another driveway access, we're talking about an extension of people's driveways.
Right.
The only thing to consider, I would say, is obviously you're adding more pavement, they're adding a larger structure in their backyard already, so you might have to think about some drainage issues if you're.
And I would hope that when they're, whoever's building this would take those in consideration, considering, especially with all the rain we have, right? If that's needed.
Well, the vast majority of the newer homes that are being built in town, and maybe even the homes that have been built over the last 20 years, you literally can't get a driveway beside the garage to get to the backyard.
And I was thinking that, too, because of the easements.
Right, right. Easements alongside property lines are standard five feet, and the homes are being set anywhere between seven and 10 feet off the property line for the most part. You probably have a bigger lot than most, so maybe you have room beside your garage, but.
I don't want more tar or concrete or anything, though. But yeah, I.
Yeah, we don't permit gravel.
If we put this in place, then we're pretty much saying those folks cannot do this because of that limitation, right?
Potentially, unless they punch a, you know, if they have a flat lot and they put a garage door out the back of their garage, or, I mean, there are options, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not a fan, then, of setting up requirements for this, then, because I feel like we will be limiting people's ability to be able to do this.
Right, and that's not the purpose.
Right.
I agree 100%.
Okay.
Okay.
So no requirement for a driveway or a pad or anything in front of the garage, so.
Right. Okay. Correct. Okay, thank you. And then, number five, does the commission wish to recommend ADUs be considered separately from or included with potential ordinance amendments relating to total allowable size?
So, yeah, right now, the ADU ordinance just references the other ordinance, or, yeah, the other section of ordinance related to accessory structures for size. So whatever we decide is going to apply to ADUs, too, unless we want to call that out separately.
In my brain, and I'm just speaking out, in my brain, I consider them two things. I think of, just in the name itself, detached accessory structure, or an accessory dwelling unit, livable, not livable. That's just my thoughts. I don't know what others feel or think.
I agree with you. So I would rather not see accessory dwelling units, like residential, live in to be lumped in with this ordinance.
Okay. So then that section of code would need to be amended, and we would have to ident, we would be seeking a recommendation on a size limit.
For the ADU?
For the accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
So right now, the ordinance has a minimum of 250 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit. But what do you feel the maximum allowable size should be?
Everything can smaller, larger than the accessory structure.
Yeah.
I mean, I think 1,000 square feet is plenty for an accessory.
It's pretty big, I mean.
That's a large.
That's like another house.
Yeah.
The footprint of a.
Especially if it's like a mother-in-law suite, you're pretty much having a studio apartment.
That's kind of what I'm thinking of, yeah, I'm trying to picture it in my brain.
I think, the way it looks right now, I think they should be the same thing.
Under the same thing?
Yeah.
And not separating them? No? Okay.
How many ADUs do we have in the city? How many?
Zero.
Zero, right now.
Okay, then I.
We do have a couple of people that have approached us, you know, in planning for a child, a special needs child, that will probably want to move into an ADU.
Yeah. Does this address attached ADUs, or we don't allow that?
We allow attached.
We do attach, okay, sorry, wrong city. Okay, we do allow it here.
Yep.
That's what I'm looking at.
So they can either be attached or detached, right?
Correct.
So if this were to stay as one, it would be, so is the maximum size 250, then?
No.
The minimum is 250, then it could go up to 1,000? If it just stays together?
Correct.
If it's separate, then we got to figure out the maximum?
Yeah.
Which, okay, all right.
And there is a section in the ADU ordinance that says, you know, you must, you can't have the appearance of two houses. You have to try to kind of hide it behind the house somehow, so it appears like it's just still one house for all the neighbors and stuff.
Right.
Yeah, to avoid the appearance of two principal structures on the same one.
Yep.
Correct.
So I would avoid going too large.
Thinking of that, then, now I'm thinking about keeping it together. I guess I was just stuck on the verbiage. Melissa, thoughts?
No, I agree with you. I think leaving it together makes sense, then, at least for the time being.
Because we have the minimum, we have the maximum.
Right.
It kind of already sets that precedent. Okay. So essentially, they're the same thing, just one is livable and one's not.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, okay. Okay, then, yeah, the. Okay, then, yeah, the recommendation to keep them together.
Okay.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Do you know how many square feet the those apartments are, like a single bedroom?
It's like eight twenty?
Eight.
So I say it's it's plenty.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, a thousand square feet is a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um then moving on to miscellaneous, um letter A, cannabis update.
Yeah, so um as you know, cannabis was legalized in twenty twenty-three. Um so we've been kind of waiting on a few key moments before it becomes uh legalized for retail and everything um on January first of next year. So one thing we were really waiting for was model ordinances to come out, and we finally received those last week. So um, yeah, you guys will be receiving some stuff in the next few months regarding zoning cannabis, so. Um I guess that's all I've really had to say for an update, but if I I'll field questions if you have any, so.
Sure, I I don't have any at this time. I guess I probably will have more when there's more info.
I guess I will add that, um so the social equity applicants, that was a big push, reason why Governor Walz um passed it. And we were originally expecting them to start getting licensure on the first of next year, but the Office of Cannabis Management actually opened that window yesterday. So people are currently applying, social equity applicants are applying for their licenses for cultivation and then retail, so it's all one license, but obviously you start with cultivation. So um yeah, that's happening right now too.
Okay.
Good, yeah, and so there will be recommended changes to the zoning ordinance as to, you know, where uh what appropriate zones would be for retail and the manufacturing and.
Like the space where it would be allowed.
Zone, yeah, zoning districts.
Yeah.
Agricultural tourism.
Yeah. I like it. All right, thank you. Community development updates.
Um I don't have any updates, uh really, the biggest um update is the city council will be considering the final plat for the park Interstate thirty-five industrial park plat at their meeting on Tues- Thursday night, so the day after tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's it. The city engineer will be giving a presentation at that meeting on the city's water appropriations permit. The city co- um the city engineer will be giving a presentation on the city's water appropriations permit at that meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thanks. Any questions, any other comments from the commission? No? Okay, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, meeting's adjourned at seven thirty-six P M. Thank you, everyone.